Good morning. We're going to get started with the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, the commission, the first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment. This time it's limited to comments on items that are on today's Regional Transportation Commission agenda. Those wishing to speak on a posted agenda item, now is your opportunity. Please step forward to the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes. As a reminder, this time for public comment is not an opportunity for dialogue, but we are certainly happy to comment with you after the meeting is concluded. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Schuber. I'm the Vice President for TransDev. And I just wanted to share with you or confirm with you that last week we were pleased to have reached a tentative agreement with the ATU. We're very excited now to put all of our focus on delivering the services for a very exciting week for our community. We've got lots of great engagement plans. We've got prizes. And we're looking forward to actually announcing on Saturday two tickets to the Super Bowl for some of our employees. So we're really excited. I'm not quite as keen because the Seahawks aren't there, but that is what it is. We're really excited to be part of that and look forward to moving Vegas. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on an item on today's agenda? Mr. Nimrod, which item are you commenting on today?
Number seven.
Very good.
Now, before you start the clock, do I get three minutes on each agenda item that I want to speak on?
Nope. Three minutes altogether.
So, good morning, Justin Jones. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eric Melchizedek Christ Nimrod. I like to be called Nimrod. You can find Nimrod in Genesis, the 10th chapter, the 6th to the 10th verse. Our lovely leader, Mayor Carolyn, good morning. And thank you, beloved MJ, Angel, Sabrina, Kat, Kaylee, Tiffany, for a Transit Equity Day event that was great. This is concerning number seven, intelligent transportation systems facility. In June 2021, the U.S. Department of Transportation Intelligent Transportation Systems Joint Program Office published the report, Putting People First: Smart Cities and Communities' Use of Advanced Information and Communication Technologies To Find Better Ways to Address Problems Like Public Health, Safety and Transportation Inequity, Transportation Inequity for Undeserved Communities. I have proposed putting people first by also making the interior signage and the buses more intelligent and mentally uplifting, which will inspire people, we the people who use the bus. It will inspire us and also inspire the people, the visitors who come to Las Vegas. The first-class signs can be put intelligently in every space where there is no advertisement. For instance, in the Rosa Parks Bus, Nelson Mandela and Oprah Winfrey were put in the back of the bus with their beautiful black skin, and Selena with her beautiful white skin was put in the front of the bus. That was not equity, and that was not intelligent. And if you want to use these signs and make more, you have to be intelligent about how you place them because they can either alleviate the problem or create a bigger problem. Now, there are thousands of inspirational quotes that can be used. Our legal department can check if there will be any copyright violations. But I'm looking at the buses as Rolls-Royce limousines.
Thank you, Mr. Nimrod.
Bespoke.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Very good. We'll go ahead and close the first public comment period, and I'll turn it back over to Ms. Maynard.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item on the agenda is to approve your agenda. It's in order and ready for approval.
All right. I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is to receive the CEO report. So today we want to recognize and thank TransDev Extra Board Driver Anthony Sims. To present this item, we have a video with Senior Director of Transit Services, Sabrina Glenn.
Thank you, MJ. We are thrilled to recognize Anthony Sims, Extra Board Driver for TransDev. Anthony is seen as a mentor by his colleagues as he provides guidance with morning bus preparations. His coworkers say they admire how much he cares for the success of others. He shared many times that he loves what he does, and he's not just a driver, but he's a customer service expert. And that can be seen from the amazing response we get from his riders. Anthony recently played a role in Las Vegas' biggest celebration, New Year's Eve. He was one of the New Year's Eve Bear Code bus drivers and worked into the early mornings of 2024. Thank you, Anthony, for always going the extra mile in helping both our customers and your colleagues. Now let's go surprise Anthony. Good morning, everybody. I'm looking for Anthony Sims. He's not out. Hi, Anthony. I'm Sabrina Glenn with the RTC. I'm the Senior Director of Transit for the agency. And on behalf of MJ Maynard and the entire Board of Commissioners for the RTC, we just wanted to present you with this Crystal Bus Award. We've gotten amazing feedback about you, especially, we all know how important it is to make pullout in the morning. If we start on time, we perform on time, and we hear that you are just an amazing asset to the team in making sure that everybody knows what they're doing, where they're going. And so for that, we just wanted to say thank you.
I appreciate to thank everybody that I work with as a group, as a family, as one unit. And they do an amazing job, and at any time and any day, I'd be glad to walk and work right alongside them.
Is Anthony here? Stand up. Let's give you a round of applause. Thank you.
This month, we'd like to recognize and honor Tango Car Driver Eric Fomel. To present this item, again, we have Sabrina Glenn.
Thank you, MJ. This month, we are proud to highlight local hero and Tango Car Driver Eric Fomel. Tango Car services both transit and paratransit customers. On a late night in October, Eric spotted a dumpster fire near a construction site down the street from a passenger drop-off. Not to delay the customer, he quickly dropped them off and returned to the fire where he put it out with the bus fire extinguisher. Unfortunately, the fire started back up, so Eric once again sprang into action and called the fire department. Thank you, Eric, for keeping our customers moving and helping to prevent a larger incident. Now let's go surprise Eric and thank him for his heroic act. Excuse me. Are you Eric? Hi, Eric. My name is Antoinette Braddock. I'm going to give you this. You don't quite know what this is for, but my name is Antoinette Braddock. And on behalf of MJ Maynard and the RTC Board of Directors, we want to present to you the Crystal Bus. This is to recognize you for all the work you do on our on-demand program, but specifically your courageous act when you were putting out fires, as you're delivering our customers, and all of the very courageous things that you were doing, again, on behalf of our customers, but certainly our community as well.
Wow, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I'm very honored to receive this Crystal Bus. Thank you so much. It was a pretty exciting day as that fire was burning next to the dumpster. I kind of knew it had to be put out. So, you know, I wanted to say thanks. This is really fantastic, you know? Thank you so much.
Eric, stand up. Let's give you a round of applause. Looking sharp.
And my applause was our Senior Director, Antoinette Braddock, who does a great job. So many thanks to both. So next, we'd like to recognize our superstars of the quarter. As the lead in their department, they went above and beyond to ensure successful operations before, during, and after the F1 event. They worked with the F1 team, with Clark County, Public Works, RTC Transit, and Law Enforcement to juggle the many and sometimes conflicting demands for their department's support. Through months of impactful construction activities, temporary bridge construction, and transfer out detours, they provided guidance and direction with a focus on safety and the goal to move traffic. So our first superstar of the quarter is Louis Valenzuela. He's our Senior Traffic Systems Technician at FAST. Thank you, Louis. Your hard work. Is Louis here? Where are you, Louis? Louis, stand up. Okay. Thanks, Louis. Did a great job. So our second superstar of the quarter has taken ownership of their department's purchasing and repairs. They meet with the departments throughout the agency to listen, to evaluate, and accommodate their purchasing needs as efficiently as possible. They have negotiated with vendors to save RTC money while providing the RTC with important products and services and work alongside their regular work hours to request, urge requests. So this person does a really good job in wrangling with a lot of the vendors, and we're very, very glad that she's on our team. So our second superstar of the quarter is Jamie Espressillon. She's a Senior Management Analyst for Fleet Administration Department. Jamie? So Commissioner, we'd like to bring both Louis and Jimmy Dandridge to take a picture with all of you, if that's okay.
Very good. Come on down.
What's that? I think so, yeah, the drivers. And then when we're done with RTC staff, if we could have Eric and Anthony also come down and take a picture with the Commissioners. All right. So on Monday of this week, the RTC celebrated Transit Equity Day alongside the Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada, otherwise known as PLAN, the Culinary Union, and local ATU. Transit Equity Day is a national day of action to honor the life and legacy of Rosa Parks on her birthday. We celebrated by unveiling a bus featuring Rosa Parks' image and hosting a resource fair that included services such as subsidized SNAP and EBT produce, free vision consultations and vaccines, and more. So we're really grateful for the community partners that helped us put this event together, including the ATU and Culinary Union. Special guests included Clark County Commissioners and RTC Board members, Justin Jones and Chairman Ted Seigerblum, as well as a former county commissioner and RTC Board Member, Chris June Kiliani. And our next item is the presentation of RTC Senior Director of FAST, Teresa Gazer, on what we provide to you every quarter. It's a state of the traffic system. I'll turn it over to Teresa.
Good morning, Board Members, and thank you, MJ. Teresa Gazer, Senior Director of FAST Division of RTC, for the record. Today, I'll be presenting the current state of our regional traffic system. FAST utilizes traffic systems management and operation strategies to make the most of our existing traffic infrastructure. We are focused on the key goals of improving safety, reducing congestion, and preserving capacity of our existing infrastructure. We have a real challenge with an increased number of vehicle-to-pedestrian crashes. In 2023, in Clark County, 82 pedestrians were killed, which is up 15% over the 71 deaths in 2022. As for capacity and congestion, we simply cannot pave more roads and hope that this activity will keep pace with our current growth in Nevada. We need to take another look at how we move millions of people through our cities each day and find innovative ways to keep our community moving. FAST operates and maintains the Southern Nevada traffic system on behalf of the state and the local agencies who are the owners of this equipment. Over the past year, traffic management network continued to grow. Currently, the entire system includes 1,671 traffic signals, 1,129 traffic cameras, 74 ramp meters, 1,626 miles of fiber-optic communications cable, which connects these intelligent transportation systems devices back to the traffic management center, and 169 dynamic message signs or active traffic management signs, which are the electronic displays along the freeway. FAST operates the traffic signals in all of Southern Nevada to promote seamless travel throughout the valley. Functioning traffic signal detection is critical to optimal performance of regional transportation network. RTC collaborated with jurisdictional partners to contract with an external company to begin replacing broken traffic equipment. Work is currently progressing with the prioritized replacement of traffic signal detection equipment at 50 signalized intersections after having catalogued over 300 broken detectors valleywide. Additionally, FAST developed and is currently deploying new traffic signal timing phasing using grid timing techniques, which created more efficient use of the one-mile spacing of major arterials in the urban core rather than promoting travel on a handful of congested arterials. To date, the Southwest and Southeast grids have been retimed, as well as several isolated corridors. In 2023, the FAST signal team retimed 363 traffic signals on 29 unique segments of roadways, resulting in overall improvements in travel times during the weekday AM, midday, and PM peaks. At the Southern Nevada Traffic Management Center, FAST supported over 12,586 traffic incidents in 2023. This included 11,504 crashes, 843 debris-in-the- roadway calls, 152 vehicles on fire, and 87 police incidents. Of the over 11,504 crashes that FAST provided traffic management support to in 2023, 4,385 occurred on surface streets and 7,199 on freeways, as shown by the numbers indicated in this slide. Using historical crash data from both surface streets and freeways, FAST can identify high-crash locations, including detailed information such as peak days of the week and times of the day, sharing this information with law enforcement and emergency responders to allow for proactive enforcement and staging of resources. In 2021, the SAFE Tech Project was awarded to the RTC and project partners Endot, Nevada Highway Patrol, and UNLV as a $6 million Advanced Transportation and Congestion Management Technologies Deployment Grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration. The SAFE Tech Project, located on U.S. 95 between I-15 and Summerlin Parkway, will use advanced technology to enhance safety, reduce travel times, and improve trip reliability and overall efficiency of our freeways while making this information accessible to the operators at the traffic management center. This project will implement safety strategies, technologies, including adding wrong-way driver warning systems on freeway off-ramps, strategic traffic monitoring sites for law enforcement, and extending the active traffic management system. Currently, this project is at 100% design level with an anticipated construction beginning in late 2024. Oh, wait, there's more. In 2023, RTC deployed three advanced intersection analytics pilot projects consisting of the eight signalized intersections that you see on your slide, using artificial intelligence to collect traffic data and provide insights into intersection operations and safety. The project uses either existing traffic signal detection cameras or vendor-supplied equipment to gain insights into high-risk behaviors, such as near misses involving pedestrians, cyclists, or vehicles, and red light running occurrences. Through analysis of trends, patterns, and rates of severity of these incidents, these insights can be used to inform geometric changes, provide additional enforcement, or develop educational campaigns for future implementation. In this view, oops, sorry. There we go. In this view, with the image on the left, you see a little red box that is a pedestrian crossing the street. This analytical overlay then translates this walk path of this pedestrian into a green line. As a result, all of these green lines show the trend of pedestrian crossings on this leg of the intersection, as you can see on the right. And the blue lines are the paths of cyclists in this intersection approach. Overall, we can clearly see the number of movements that are occurring outside of the painted crosswalks. The desired outcomes from these pilots include producing actionable data, gaining experience with these new technology systems, and determining if these systems are viable for larger-scale deployment. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act provided many opportunities for competitive grants that promote safety, technology, and modernization of our transportation network in Southern Nevada. FAST is looking for technology and opportunities to begin transitioning away from field hardware and reducing our maintenance and replacement costs. In 2023, the Safer, Faster, Smarter Pilot Project was awarded to the RTC as a $2 million Strengthening Mobility and Revolutionizing Transportation Grant, also known as SMART, from the U.S. Department of Transportation's Federal Highway Administration. The project cost is $3 million. In this pilot project located near the city of Las Vegas' UMC Medical District, emergency vehicle preemption and transit signal priorities using new technology solutions will be deployed to expedite travel time of emergency responders and transit vehicles at signalized intersections. With rapid advancements of these technologies, newer systems have demonstrated improved response time for emergency transit vehicles while reducing the need for field equipment and providing better integration of the central traffic signal operation system. Additionally, this project will also utilize advanced intersection analytics to understand high-risk behaviors and their impacts on emergency vehicles. At the completion of this pilot project, RTC should be better informed to move forward and apply for a future round of SMART grant funding, which will allow for regional scaling of this project. All right. As the entertainment capital of the world, Las Vegas has continued to expand its offerings to include major sporting events. In 2020, the RTC created the Regional Events Traffic Management Meeting to coordinate with venues, first responders, law enforcement, traffic control companies to better understand the regional impacts of multiple events at various venues. Major events this year included the Consumer Electronics Show, Electric Daisy Carnival, the Formula One Las Vegas Grand Prix race, and preparation for this weekend's first Las Vegas Super Bowl. FAST tracked 932 major special events this year, actively worked 304 of these events, and prepared and programmed signal timing for an additional 159 events. For the Formula One race alone, the FAST team participated in over 75 meetings, reviewed over 100 sets of plans, and provided five continuous days of staffing coverage for this event. FAST is highly focused on keeping the traveling public proactively informed. In 2023, FAST worked closely with our agency partners and the media to proactively share traffic closure and road conditions so the public can make informed decisions about their trip planning, from daily commuting to special event impacts, road construction, and during holiday weekends. In 2023, FAST answered, on an average, 850 calls per month, including calls from the public, media, other agencies, which equates to roughly 10,000 calls in the year. We sent over 10,595 traffic alerts and emails and traffic messages, including in the Waze Navigation App, and posted 3,679 unique messages on freeway dynamic message signs to alert drivers of traffic conditions. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Teresa. Vice Chairman?
Yes, thank you very much. Of course, you know, safety is always a paramount concern to this board and, of course, to our communities. I was just interested here on the slide with the advanced intersection analytics and what we're doing here. I noticed those intersections. Were there a criterion? How are these intersections in particular picked over other ones, which, you know, well, we have lots of intersections throughout the valley that have all sorts of issues?
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate that question. Yes, there was a set of criteria that was implemented for this initial pilot study. What we needed to do is we reached out to all of the local agencies and worked with their traffic engineering and public works directors to make certain that we understood what were the high-crash locations in their area, as well as working with law enforcement to understand their high-crash location areas. After we understood which areas were of the highest concern for this initial pilot, we did have to vet the intersection to see if they had the appropriate signal detection equipment out there to allow us to do this first pilot and implement it and stand it up quickly. In future rounds, what we do hope to do is be able to bring in equipment to an intersection if it may already have loops in the pavement for detection rather than video detection at that signalized intersection.
So it was based on the signal detection equipment, not just the visual ones, but the ones that are already mounted in the street then?
If they were in the street, the impavement loops could not be used for this particular pilot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. And my question is based on the fact that right from this meeting, I'm going to go meet with the Bolden Area Command Captain to talk about this very issue of traffic safety, looking at the recent article in the newspaper about the highest intersections with the most amount of incidents. So I'm curious, what does it look like between the RTC and your organization and Metro? And how do we organize their resources around what you know is the most problematic areas within the community?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. I appreciate it. What we are doing is we involve law enforcement as stakeholders in this original pilot study, as well as the public works directors and traffic engineers at all of the local agencies. So we always have that open dialogue with them to understand what are their highest priorities and known risk areas. And then because of that, we were then able to include their recommendations into the vetting process, at least for this initial pilot. Moving forward, what we'd like to do is now that we understand this technology better and that it is applicable and scalable, and that it is applicable and scalable, we would like to move forward with growing this project in the future, and that will include regular evaluations with not only law enforcement for their insights on high-risk locations, but also with your local agencies.
One more question, and you may not know the answer to this, and I'll ask Metro as well, but I'm curious. Within their traffic unit, the bicycle cops, is it just within their division, or is the information filtering down to the area commands as well to make sure? Because I believe that this is going to be a pretty high priority for Metro going into the next year.
I believe all the captains were involved in this process.
And I'll just chime in, because we met with Chief Clarkson earlier this week, County did, and our Traffic Safety Director, Andrew Bennett. Yes, it's going to be a much higher priority for Metro than it ever has been before, based on direction from Sheriff McMahill. And so we met with our two area captains, and then Chief Clarkson is going to be clearing out issues within Metro records in order to make sure that there's better coordination between the jurisdictions, the RTC and Metro, in order to make traffic a much higher priority. Director?
Just a couple of comments. One I wanted to add on to, that Endot is also having a strong focus on particularly intersection safety. It's one of our strongest focuses this year for vulnerable road users, and so, as we talked earlier, that we will be working with you, I think, in the next coming meeting. We'll also bring our data to the table. The other thing I wanted to put on, and this is just, again, a comment, is I want to, again, just explain for people who may not know how extraordinary FAST is in the nation. This is a partnership that started almost, actually, over 20 years ago, when we built it first in the nation to have the RTC, the local MPO, the state, and then all the other transportation agencies together. We are a model for the rest of the nation, and if you don't think I'm the first one when I'm in DC and other places, come look at us, look at us. It is extraordinary, and we have been able to, we, and I mean collectively, we, have been able to move so much farther on a lot of initiatives because everyone was willing to give up a little bit to consolidate the operations in one place. So kudos to RTC and all the partners within here. It is extraordinary.
Thank you.
And that was absolutely in evidence with F1, so thank you so much. Counselor?
Again, thank you for the presentation. I'm just wondering, when you say you want to grow this analytical program, do we have a specific plan to do that, and have we budgeted for it?
Yes, that is currently what we are working on.
Thank you.
All right. Other comments?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor Goodman first, then Mayor Hardy.
Thank you. Again, also, the thank you for the report. I think collaborative, the partnership here is obviously very large. I think there needs to be some effort back at the legislature, because I'm sure data analytics will reveal, and it's not rocket science, that once citations for jaywalking and crossing beyond, I know everybody, the crossing mark is very far apart, but certainly data will prove there's so many deaths on the roadways because of jaywalking, and that, I think, the collaborative together to get to the legislature so it's citable and finable and stop the jaywalking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Hardy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm somewhat new to this whole process, and when I heard this word "fast," I thought, so what's the point? And it's almost like an oxymoron and a mixed message, so, you know, why don't we call it "slow"? You know, safety learning of wary walkers or something. So, you know, I'm new to this, but when I see "fast," I think that means I can, as opposed to "should," just an observation from somebody who's new to this process.
Thank you for that. FAST originally came about when the department was first named, and the acronym is for Freeway and Arterial System of Transportation, which is what it is, but I absolutely understand your concern.
We appreciate your quick wit, Mayor. Any other comments? Counselor?
Good. You mentioned the interaction you have with Formula One. Was there any compensation from them for the effort you put in?
No, not at this time, but we did keep all accounting records of what was the overtime, what was the amount of effort that it took our staff, and also, it's difficult to gauge it, but what did it also take away from our typical operations that we then had to work with or that we then collaborated with F1 on to make that event successful?
Could you provide that to me or to the county staff? We're trying to get all that stuff together.
Yeah, absolutely. Not a problem.
And also, kind of a separate issue, but is there any, do you have any process where you're trying to identify issues where streetlights are out and maybe have a central reporting thing, maybe have the bus drivers report, but one of the things we're trying to do is to look at this and put together some type of task force to go out and deal with those streetlights that have been taken out? And if we had some kind of a reporting process where people could report in and say, "These streetlights are out," collectively, that would be very beneficial, I think.
Are you referring to the traffic signals or to the actual lights?
No, the streetlights. I know that you're not in charge of those, but your people are out there all the time, and I'm sure you're seeing these dead spots.
Absolutely. So whenever anything like that is observed or brought to our attention, we right away log it into our ticketing inventory system and share that with all of the owning agencies, respectively.
Could I, Mr. Chairman, could I add into that? I know for our, at the city of Las Vegas, when those lights are out, we generally call our public works and where it goes from there, they notify, because I knew on Sahara, for instance, from Durango down, there's a big black spot there. Sometimes the lights aren't on, so that would be extremely helpful to the driver, a single, touch a number, get it. That's a great idea.
So MJ, could we put out, I may already do it, but if not, have the drivers actively reach out to you and report it into you, then report it to us where there's places like this? Because I know that one incident where the driver ran over somebody, the lights were all out, which is terrible.
Will do.
Yeah, and just also to follow up on that, when I met with Chief Clarkson from Metro this last week, we talked about that very issue, and he is be working with Metro IT to push out Fix-It Clark County and our own apps that allow them to report issues like that to all Metro officer phones, and we are going to be providing a one-pager to Metro officers so they can do that kind of reporting, so we could probably do the same thing with RTC if interested.
Chairman, I also wanted to mention, to request of Commissioner Jones, we are putting together postmortem regarding F1, trying to calculate just the quantitative cost to the agency. We'll provide that to you in the next week.
Is there a calculator that you can count that high? Justin?
We appreciate your sarcasm, Commissioner.
I appreciate your report too, but I have a question on that latter. Once you figure out these costs, how do you get them back next year? How do you tell Formula One, "This is what it cost us last year for you to have this race here? You need to pay us this much because we can't keep losing money."
That is on the county. We are in discussions with the new COO of F1, and they need our permission in order to move forward, so that is on us.
Great. Thank you, Teresa. Great report. The next item on the agenda is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report from Tracy Larkin-Thomason.
Thank you, MJ. Okay, we're going to start off at our favorite intersection right now. The New Harmon Avenue half interchange was opened on January 26. From this, you can access the northbound I-15 to eastbound westbound Harmon and eastbound westbound Harmon to southbound I-15. This will give drivers another access to and from the Las Vegas Strip, and it's a critical step before we're starting Phase 5 of I-15 Tropicana. Isn't it nice to hear that we're actually past Phase 2, we're getting there? Tropicana Avenue Super Bowl configuration, this has been since just this past week. It is in place until Valentine's Day, February 14th, so there are three lanes in each direction. There is some, you can't make any left turns off across the Tropicana, and that's simply because of the difference in elevation between the two structures. It's just not possible at this time. But more ramps are open, and it will allow more capacity moving back and forth. Starting, we're going to start tearing it down, though, on February 14th, and then we move right into the following weekend, so please really celebrate the openness of it this weekend, because the following weekend, we'll have the Tropicana 2.0, and that's actually where we're going to close both I-15 and the Tropicana Boulevard there in order to bring down the southern structure and move right into Phase 3 of the interchange. Then, on the long term, so you'll see this from about February after we put that down, the Harmon half, the, I'm sorry, the Harmon half change will be open. I-15, whoops, wrong one. This will take us into the fall of 2024, so after this, we'll go from February to the fall. The New Harmon half change will be open, and the Tropicana will return to the similar traffic configuration it had before with the temporary diverging diamond. The ramps will be closed 24/7. The southbound, which includes a southbound I-15 flyover to eastbound Tropicana, the Tropicana Avenue off-ramp to southbound I-15, the northbound access to Arena, and the northbound I-15 off-ramp to Tropicana. We will be keeping, as always, a lot of media outreach and making sure that people are continually reminded of what this stage will take. And here, just a little bit, in truth, I'm not sure why we have this slide in here, but it's a nice slide. Talking on Endot Stormwater, we were just, and this is always a fun thing, but we hosted a field trip in Las Vegas in the North Maintenance Station down here on January 18th with the fifth graders from the Roger DeGeary Academy of Sciences. We had over 100 students broken down into smaller groups, and they rotated among six different stations manned by the district staff, and these were representations on the difference between stormwater and sanitary sewer systems. They did like an environmental scape demo, which is a water tape or a water table slide, which you can see there on the far left. Then the best management practices, also known as BMPs, and permeable pavers were discussion. Culvert cleaning equipment, kind of a show-and-tell, stormwater monitoring and hydrodynamics separator conversation on loss stations. And this is just, in a later one, we want to put into the kind of workforce development efforts we're making, that we'll also begin, starting from the K through 12, hitting them earlier to kind of entice them into, you know, whether it's Endot or other one, but publicly to introduce them to the sciences, introduce them to these type of careers. We have a lot, and I also wanted to point out, we do have, at this time, public service internships are open now, which is for college students. If you have anyone who wants to work this summer, it's actually a fairly competitive wage. We are taking applications now, and you really just need to send your resume and your name, and we can provide that, whether you put it here or you send it to me, we'll make sure it gets to the right person. These are, we usually have about, actually, depending on the applications, anywhere from 40 to 70 a year throughout the state. Even if the student is working out of state and they're coming home for the summer, they're eligible to do it. We can make locations in Boulder City, rural areas, and certainly in the different metropolitan areas. And it's also wide range. It's not only engineers, it's accountants. I'm truly trying to sell this, so if you know kids, have them apply. So on that, we also have the I-15 Central Corridor NIPA Study. This is in partnership with FHWA, and we have been working, of course, on I-15, I'm sure none of you noticed that, for three decades to accommodate the growth that you have down here. And this is a section of I-15 between Tropicana Avenue and Sahara Avenue, and it's the last section to be upgraded adjacent to the resort corridor. A feasible study conducted in 2019 identified alternatives focused on safety, traffic operations, and right-of-way needs, and we're still continuing to evaluate this in the NIPA process. There was an in-person meeting held on January 31st, and the virtual public meeting will run through Thursday, February 16th. And you can learn more, you have the website, it's on the screen, but ifiveencentral.com. And then the other thing is, I know it seems strange, and I was just saying earlier, to see a snowplow down here for the Vegas, but you do have Mount Charleston, and you have been known to get snow down here. So one of the things, as we're saying, we're really working on several efforts to develop our workforce, and we will talk more about that at another meeting, but the critical hire, CDL drivers, we're definitely looking at that. We have an executive order allowing us to bring them in at a higher level. So again, if you know someone with a CDL license, even if they don't have a CDL license and they want to get trained, we do train them, we'll bring them on. We have positions right here in Vegas, so come on board. That concludes it.
Unless you work for the RTC, then don't do that, because we need you on our.
I know. I'm sorry, unbartered pitch for workers, so.
Thank you, Director. I know you got to run, but any questions or comments from the board?
Just wanted to remind her that we're 95, whatever you call it now, we're trying to get that interchange to Sahara. The county has it designed, we'll pay for it. All you have to do is just give us the go.
I know that our deputy director, Sondra Rosenberg, is working with your staff, and I believe you are starting to look at the NIPA process, so we are in coordination with you.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, and good luck with the train.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to approve the consent agenda. It consists of items 5 through 18, it can be taken in one motion.
I'll entertain a motion. Does motion approve the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item 19 is to appoint three members in an alternate to the RTC Finance Committee.
Very good. Anyone interested in the Finance Committee? Okay. Anyone else? All right, then we'll have Vice Chair Barone, Councilman Knudsen, and Councilman Shaw. That works.
Great. Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
Okay, sorry.
All right. We'll entertain a motion.
Do what he said.
Very good. This motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll have Senior Director of Human Resources, Decretia Harris, present the next agenda item.
Good morning, members of the board. This item is to evaluate the performance of the chief executive officer for the period of January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Formulate recommendations on management goals and objectives for 2024, and adjust compensation or take action as deemed appropriate. Excuse me. On November 9th, 2023, the RTC Board of Commissioners appointed Chairman Jones, Vice Chair Barone, Mayor Pro Tim Knudsen, with Mayor Goodman as alternate to serve on the Evaluation Committee to review the performance of the CEO. On January 18th, 2024, the Evaluation Committee met to evaluate the goals and accomplishments of the chief executive officer. Recommendations may be presented at today's board meeting by the committee. Mr. Chairman, this item is now turned over to Ms. Mater for a brief presentation, then over to you and the board for action.
Thanks, Decretia. So first of all, I want to thank the board for your leadership, for your direction. I'd like to start, this is something that I think about every day, it's a quote from Steve Jobs, and it says that "Great things of business are never done by one person, they're done by a team of people." And so, you know, I represent the entire organization. The accomplishments represent the really good work of this team, but also the collaboration with all of your staff, with community organizations, with business sector, with the contractors, the operators, mechanics, it really takes a village to get this done, so I just want to acknowledge that this was not just MJ's accomplishments, this is a team effort. But 2023 was challenging. I mean, it's still, you know, we continued to encounter inflation, supply chain issues, rising labor costs, and safety and security challenges. Again, we face these challenges together as a team and worked through many, many challenges, and it was a challenging year, but there were some triumphs. And so I'm going to go through a few of the accomplishments, you have a full report that you have access to, but I first want to again, thank you. I'm lucky enough to work at the national level with transit systems, and I will tell you, I am very lucky to have a board such as yourselves to report to, and I just base that on what I hear. I can't thank you enough for your leadership, your direction, and your involvement. It is something that we feel, we see, and I think we all appreciate. Also want to thank again, it is a team effort. The executive team, Deputy CEO David Swallow, Deputy CEO Angela Castro, Deputy CEO Chris Cole was here for five months, they set the tone every single day. We would not be here today without the incredible staff, RTC staff. They are dedicated, they strive for excellence, they believe what we do, and they're committed to the community. And then I'd also like to thank all of the contractors.
Don't forget the money man over there.
Well, I'll get to him.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, he's great. And then I also, I really want to acknowledge our contractors, the bus operators, the mechanics, our state and local officials, from the federal level, the state level, and all of you, we are successful because of your assistance. And again, just I'll go through quickly some of our accomplishments in 2023. Safety is, again, whether you get around by car, by Safety is, again, whether you get around by car, bus, you walk, safety is at the core of what we do. So on the transit side, when we talk about safety, again, thanks to the board, we were able to increase the security budget by $5 million, it enabled us to add additional 33 officers, double the number of vehicles that are out roaming the system, and that's taken that to 16. Security incidents overall decreased by 12%, while ridership increased by 21%. We installed over 700 Slimline shelters and standalone lights. It's important that our customers feel safe when they're standing at a bus stop, waiting for the bus, and so that's a big priority, will continue, is ongoing year after year. We also partnered with bus operators to pilot, we piloted a GPS-based panic button. In the next few months, 500 of those panic buttons will be provided to all bus operators that training first, but that is something that will happen in 2024. On the traffic management side, I'm not going to go through what you heard from Teresa, they do a lot of work, I think people are surprised how much we do. Teresa's right, when I talked to the industry, we are really lucky, I'm part of a consortium for the, for the Olympics that will be held in LA, and in talking to them, some of the advice I've given, there's over 100 traffic management systems just in LA County alone. That's going to be probably, that will be very difficult and challenging for them as they prepare for the Olympics. Here in Southern Nevada, we are, we are really known for being the best of, and so I, again, I'm not going to go, but if you saw that, certainly the incident management, the advanced intersection analytics, which, to your point, Councilman Shaw, something we look forward to furthering in the community, the LiDAR roadway inventory, and that's something that, again, the traffic management team, the Streets and Highways team do a great job in ensuring that we're using technology to identify areas where we can be better. On the federal grants, and I have to thank Mark and his team, we go after every single federal grant that comes out. And so we received a $1.68 million Safe Streets For All grant, that's going to help develop a regional Vision Zero plan that we don't have right now. We were also awarded a pedestrian collision avoidance system, and that will allow the RTC to purchase equipment to detect pedestrians, cyclists, and vulnerable users, and that will be placed on our fleet of vehicles. And then we, we work closely with Southern Nevada, Nevada Health District, this was part of Assembly Bill 343 in the walk audit. This past year, we concluded one of the region's first ever bicycling audit, it was part of the Henderson College Area Livable Centers Project, and three other walk audits were performed. Again, great job by the team. Service, again, lots of challenges, particularly around the ongoing construction in F1, but we continue to show up every day and serve the community. Again, thanks to the operators and the mechanics for making that happen. We, and this, you know, the first bullet point, the largest natural fixed route transit contract, it may just sound like a simple bullet point, but it was a huge effort. It took, it was a year in the making, we now operate the largest fixed route contract in the, in the nation, and I have to thank again the team at the RTC and all of the mechanics with feelless MV and Transit did a great job. We also, again, as you know, in partnership with Clark County, we provide game day express service. We moved hundreds of thousands of passengers to Rebel Games, to Golden Knights Games, and to Raider Games. And actually, when we do that, we figured we reduced about 108 car trips, and so imagine if people couldn't take the game day express, the traffic congestion around those stadiums would be worse than they are today. We partnered, continue to partner with Clark County School District to provide service for 20 high schools, their participating students. We provided close to 228,000 trips, high school students are riding our vehicles, not just to school, but they're also using the passes to, on the weekends and the evenings. It really also helps the school district alleviate their issues with their own bus service, and so it's a great partnership. Our on-demand service, we provided over 80,000 microtransit trips, and that is a 59% increase from the previous year and a 347% growth since the program launched in November of 2021. Again, on the engineering side, we have Maryland Parkway Bus Rapid Transit, a project that is underway. We received an FTA grant of $150 million. Technically, if you ever read, see that, we got notice, we got notice that the grant is coming, and so that was, that happened in March of 2023. We also received a $5.8 million discretionary grant for future high-capacity transit along Charleston Boulevard, that's something that we'll study. We also received a $2 million grant through the Build America Bureau, and that is to continue the implementation of the Boulder Highway Reimagined Project in the city of Las Vegas in Clark County. We also received a 560,000 federal grant for a transit-oriented development planning study for Boulder Highway, that's a TOD grant. And then we received a 630,000 federal transit administrative grant, it's Areas of Persistent Poverty Grant, and that is going to allow us to look at how we can enhance multimodal access in disadvantaged neighborhoods, and we're going to look first and foremost around downtown Las Vegas, and downtown North Las Vegas, and the east side. And then in terms of engagement, we partnered, again, it is, takes a village, we partnered with health and social service providers to have POP events at the BTC. We actually sold their, over 2,100 pounds of fresh fruit and vegetables to, to our, to the customers there. We partnered with Nevada Homeless Alliance, Opportunity Village, Southern Nevada Health District, and Prevail Marketplace. And then, of course, you heard from Teresa, just the traffic security time, and that is a focus, a priority for us this year. A lot of the detection equipment out there is, it's either outdated or it's, it's, it's broken, if you will, so that is a high priority for the agency to continue improving the movement of traffics on our materials. And of course, you saw the traffic management team, the public engagement, we actually have media training for our fast staff, because they talk to the media every single day. Sustainability, it's, again, at the core what we do. You are aware that we implemented this past year two, two hydrogen fuel cell electric buses and four battery electric buses. We also, you know, we've got a team that, we negotiate with vendors, and they negotiated the sale of 22 60-foot hydrogen fuel cell buses, saving the RTC approximately $6.3 million. So they put them in a headlock, and they ensure that we are being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. In support of the, of electric buses, we received a grant from NV Energy, over $568,000 to help us install infrastructure for those battery electric buses. And then we are in the first phase of design, we are, Maryland Parkway BRT will be the first route that will be a zero emission route, we're purchasing hydrogen fuel cell electric buses for that route, so we're, we installed, are installing the hydrogen fueling infrastructure. And then Club Ride, we, this is a program I think that maybe you don't hear a lot about, it's our, it's, we're encouraging employees to look at another way to get to work aside from the single occupant vehicle car, and we actually have 375 businesses that are enrolled and over 21,000 employees that participate. And then lastly, we expanded our seat bike share through the Las Vegas Medical District, $26,000 sponsorship by the Southern Nevada Health District, and those locations will be in and around the UNLV Kirk Kukron School of Medicine. And here, so that, Mark, we always talk about, we are, we need to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, we need to be very accountable, and that is how we spend the money, how we generate revenue, and how we seek additional funding sources. And so we, we issued a $200 million motor vehicle fuel tell, motor vehicle fuel tax highway bond, and a $100 million sales and excise revenue bond, and that is to ensure that there is money in the coffers so that all the infrastructure projects that your teams are going after, that the money is there. And it seems as if we have an audit at our agency every month. We had five audits this past year, and I'm, I cannot, I cannot tell you, it's a, it's an ongoing process, it takes a lot of work, a lot of hours. Marketing's team fought five major audits, zero findings on all of them, and so, again, amazing team. Also because of Mark's stewardship, we receive, our sales tax revenue bond rating increase from Standard and Poor's rating service from AA to AA+. And then the, the team, in terms of purchase orders, they are busy, we, there were purchase and change orders totaling over $327 million, and we executed over 100 agenda items. The Streets and Highway team, they continue to impress, so you approved a 2.2 capital improvement program, and it's a team that they oversee this program, so they are, there were 287 open inter-local contracts with your jurisdictions, the team managed over 233, $233 million in paid invoices and processed over 2,300 invoices. And so it, almost an offshoot with, to the mini-finance team, they do a great job managing this money. We also applied for 13 competitive federal grants, of which we were selected for six, totaling over $10 million. And we also have four grant applications pending that are worth about approximately $3 million, we're waiting to see if we will be successful there. And we also launched a contactless payment, so customers can get onboard a system, they can use their debit card, their credit card, Google Pay, their smartwatch, and it may sound easier, there's not a lot of transit systems that do that, because it's a really technical, it's a big lift. And I have to again thank Michelle Whitney, our revenue manager, Mark and his team to make that happen. It was, it was, it was not easy, a year in the making, but again, what can we do to improve the customer experience? And then lastly, under the direction of Angela Castro, our media, our partner Outfront Media, they were good in meeting their minimum annual guarantee of $4 million. They installed 10 new digital advertising units on the strip, and so, again, any way that we can look to generate revenue, again, is part of our job, so good job to the team. And it is about the community, right, it's in our DNA, we don't do this alone, we collaborate with, with, with the community and with all the stakeholders, and again, Teresa talked about Formula One and just the magnitude of that, and again, Commissioner Seggerblum, I know you've also asked for the costs associated with that, and we'll get that, we'll get that to you next week. And then as Teresa talked about, the regional event traffic management collaboration, that is, you know, that is, just for that, if you think about the meetings, it was with the state and local jurisdictions, it was the major resorts, the event venues, the event promoters, traffic control companies, law enforcement, emergency services, and convention authorities. And so it is, it's a 24-hour day job for this team, they do a great job. Wanted to talk about, we were, we awarded 2.8% of RTC contracts to disadvantaged business enterprise. We far surpassed the federal participation goal of 0.3% for FTA-funded projects. And then locally, we certified 33 firms to be, as part of our RISE program, enabling these small, local diverse businesses to compete for FRI-funded projects. We hosted five federal events, certainly included many of you, our federal delegation, and that was really to bring local and national media to attention to the RTC priorities. The events included the U.S. Department of Transportation, the Federal Transit Administration, the US DOT Secretary Polly Tronberg was here, of course, our federal delegation, state, and all of you, so thank you so much. We also secured 123 national and 410 local media stories and three local and national award recognitions. We hosted, and again, good job to our, our marketing team, they hosted 270 community events, speaking engagements, public meetings, and we, so we basically interacted face-to-face with over, close to 200,000 citizens. We secured 19 new community partnerships from large hotel and casino properties, so if we do something, we do an event for our customers, they provide us sort of the giveaways to give to these customers. And then finally, we increased the RTC blog list. People really like to read our blog, I'm sure you all do, it's, it's great stories. We increased that by over 18% to 30, almost 31,000 subscribers, we increased our social media followers on three major platforms by an average of 5.5%, or over 46,000 new followers along with managing just the followers that we have on our social media platforms. So 2023 was certainly challenging, but it was very rewarding. Again, thank you to your leadership and to the team RTC. Really quickly, I'll just go through some things that we're working on for 2024. I will just point out here, the bus driver enclosures, we, we know that that is something that the, the bus operators would like, because what they have right now is just not good enough. And so there are three transit systems, United States, only three, that have a fully enclosed barrier, so we are working, it's in Miami Dade, New York, and King County up in Seattle. So we are working with an engineer that will design some prototypes on our buses here, and then we will get feedback from the operators to see which one they prefer. That is a high priority for the RTC, we'll get it done in 2024. And as you can see, again, we'll continue to go after technology initiatives to improve safety here in Southern Nevada, including the advanced intersection analytics, the pedestrian collision avoidance. Maryland Parkway, we're actually going to receive the money next month, we hope. I should say, hope is not a good business strategy. We are going to receive the money next month, which means that we are going to start construction in the third quarter, I believe, Dave, Maryland Parkway BRT. Transit service change, you know, it was, we, we, we didn't gain a lot of fans during F1 and with the ongoing instructions, very, very difficult, not only for the drivers that have to maneuver it, but for our transit customers, so we're going to have the service chains looks at really improving some of our performance metrics for our customers. And then we have something in the last one, that complete electrical battery management system, what does that mean? We need to, as we're investing in zero emission vehicles, we really want to understand the data and understand how they operate and really compare that to the vehicles that we have right now. And we are, again, we're going to issue, you'll see us in May, we're going to be issuing another $200 million in motor vehicle fuel tax to ensure that we have enough money available to your jurisdictions for the infrastructure projects. We're going to be updating the Southern Events, Southern Nevada Strong Plan. We received a grant, almost $800,000 from Department of Defense to study transportation in and around Nellis, because this is an area that continues to grow. We'll continue making vulnerable, we're using a road user safety program, that is going to be a high priority, as you heard even talking to Teresa, it is not only about how we move our transit customers, it's how we move, it is the community. And then the roadway design criteria, it doesn't sound very exciting, but it really is, for the first time, first time, we are actually taking a look at the design criteria, our Streets and Highways team, and we're working directly with your jurisdictions to update the criteria. It has never been done, there are new ways that people move, we have to address, how do we, how can we better design our roadways, and that is, we received a grant to do that as well, so more to come on that, we'll keep you apprised. And that concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions that we have.
Thank you, MJ. We appreciate the tremendous amount of work that you and your team have done over the last year. Any comments or questions from the board? Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you very much. That was a good report. During your actual evaluation hearing, I, I know I, I praised you on some, and I offered up some suggestions, I don't recall exactly what they were, but I'm sure they were insightful and constructive.
I have them here, Councilman.
Oh, you see? And that, I guess that's another thing that we could actually say on her behalf. She takes suggestion into.
You had great comments, and we are going to, you know, you certainly want us to continue providing statistics on security and how we're going to enhance that. You want us to keep you apprised, all of you, about the driver enclosure and how that's coming along, I know that's a big priority for you. Commissioner, you also were asking about our plans, we're going to be recruiting a new deputy CEO, and certainly looking at a succession plan of the RTC. And I think that you also asked for tour and safety committee meetings, so basically how, what does transit look like in terms of ensuring that we're continuing to get out there and meet with our, with your constituents and talk about what we're doing? And then key decision makers you want to bring together, what does transit look like? So potentially putting together a, I don't know if it's a consortium, but those are some things you, you offered.
I'm really glad that someone noted that at that hearing, right? I just, I'm winding down my career as a, as a teacher, and maybe it's a good thing, I am winding it down, you know, I'm getting all the little forgetnies, right? So, but no, that's fantastic. Just a couple of, a couple of things that really stick out in me, stick out in my mind just with my experience in North Las Vegas. The one thing I think that is probably understated is the improvement of the bond rating. For, of course, the, the money guys, right, I think they do understand what that means. But what it means to the public is that with the improvement of the bond rating, you get a lot more bang for your buck, you get a lot less money going from the taxpayers paying on interest, and that's money that could actually be turned to providing new services. In North Las Vegas, that's one of the things that, you know, again, that we went from junk status to actually an A-, which is, that's like a light, light, light years, kind of like improvement. And I, I think that that should also be included as part of this. We see that, you know, with all the, with all the difficulties that, that, and all the challenges that RTC has been facing, right? And long-term, of course, you know, there's still going to be challenges with financing. The fact that you're able to improve the, the bond rating, right? Again, that doesn't mean a lot to, to, to people, but it should. Again, what that means is we're going to be able to get more of our services at a better rate, and provide better services in the future. And so I will definitely add that to the commendations. And of course, to your team.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Commissioner?
No, you go.
I didn't hear, maybe I missed it. So we're working on legislation for the Transit Authority Police?
So that, thanks for that question, that's something we're going to be putting together, a working group to do exactly that, to prepare for the 2025 legislative session around transit, please.
Okay. And also to overturn the governor's veto or resubmit our tax that he failed to support?
Commissioner, I'll be, I'll be actually presenting to the Clark County Commission and then to the other jurisdictional boards, our funding challenges, that will include roadway funding issue that will occur if we do not continue to index fuel tax to inflation, so more of that you'll see in March. So more of that, uh, you'll see in March.
And finally, not to beat a dead horse, but anyone who knows anything about F1 and has an idea of how we can do it better, um, hopefully you guys, your agency is, is trying to get drivers and other people to get those ideas up to us, up to you, and then get them to us and, and make sure that, again, all the costs that you experienced, we know about that too.
Commissioner, and thanks, and thanks again for your direction because you certainly have asked us to, to come back with a pro forma that includes, it will include some recommendations that we have for improvement next year.
Good. Mayor?
Yes, I just want to commend you, Ms. Minard, because I think having sat through meetings for years in leadership at the RTC, who have all been excellent, but you are truly superior in how you respond. You've been so cordial to so many at a time when the angst in our staff and drivers and what they have to deal with every day, our maintenance crews, our individual drivers, everybody that works in operations. Um, you're just such a solid human being. You're a trustworthy individual and there isn't enough money or enough benefits to compensate you, in my opinion, for the great leadership and consistency in your leadership. And for anybody who knows anything about the RTC and MJ and her entire team, our legal team, the finance team, everybody that works, no matter what marketing job you have or no matter how large or small your actual part of service to this great organization, the leadership is outstanding. And I just want you to know you're in very good hands. We are recognized around the country for the outstanding results. And it's all part of us being fair, open, trying to help. And as the chairman of the county commission, Chair Seiger Blum has said, I mean, you can hear him, we want to fix the issues. We're a family of people who make this home. And so every one of us is part of that. But your leadership has been absolutely outstanding and there isn't enough funds available to compensate you as you deserve. So I just want you to know that, as an alternative to the committee, who I apologize to, lucky I wasn't sitting there with them. Thank you.
Not enough, but we'll, we'll try and find some. I just wanted to note two things real fast before we move on to a motion. To the mayor's point, it's, it's, it's the entire organization, but to give a sense for, for MJ and the leadership, she, she is the incoming chair of the American Public Transit Association, big deal. But most, more tellingly was at our, uh, as our committee meeting to, to consider, um, these recommendations today. A 27-year janitor took the time, first time she's ever testified at a meeting in her life. And she took the time out of her day to come to that meeting and talk about MJ and the wonderful human being that she is. So that was very special for us that were, that were on the committee. So we appreciate you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, Councilman Shaw.
First of all, thanks for a great presentation. And I guess I'm addressing my remarks not necessarily to you and your staff because you've done an excellent job, uh, of performing what is necessary for RTC with very limited funds. I hope what this board took from it is that we have a job to do. We need to find more money, uh, to continue this operation and to continue to move Southern Nevada forward. So I'm hopeful that from the dais, that we all accept that responsibility and help with legislature, uh, understand the need and push them hard for that.
Absolutely. All right, Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, I, okay. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I'd like to make a, a motion, um, to approve the evaluation committee's recommendation of a 7.5 salary increase and a 3% cost of living adjustment in July of 2024.
Very good. There's a recommendation on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, MJ.
Again, thank you very much for your leadership. Okay, so the next item is, uh, item number 21, that's receive legal guidance. We have nothing to discuss. We move on to the last agenda item, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
Very good. This is second tide set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment with regards to matters before the Regional Transportation Commission, please step forward, state your name for the record, uh, and please limit your comments to three minutes as a reminder. Public comment is not a time for the board to directly engage in dialogue with members of the public.
Hi, County, or, hi Commissioners, my name's Dennis Hennessy. I'm a coach operator with TransDev. I only have one word, disappointment. Disappointment in the Commissioners, disappointment in the staff and disappointment in TransDev. There's a better way for the passengers and the drivers in this system that it can be run. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. MJ, Mayor Goodman, I met you guys outside of this, um, situation. My name is Francesca Parker. I am a bus operator for TransDev as well as ATU 1637 shop steward. My concern is I see all this money being spent for everything we need in our beautiful city, which I love because I came from a city that wasn't as beautiful as this one. But I'm trying to understand where do the bus drivers fall in this? We moved this city, but we are off of 4%. 4% of my salary is 92 cents a year. When I have drivers calling me as their union rep saying that they can't pay their rent, they're becoming homeless, it's very shameful. Not just for our city, which we have a bombarded amount of homeless people, but the people who move your city every day is becoming homeless. 2175, they can't make it off that. The 2337, they can't make it off that. And it's sad. And I just wanted to voice that so you can add that up in your head. 92 cent a year is just not enough. And majority of your staff who runs your bus system is becoming homeless because they cannot pay rent here in an economy that a three-bedroom apartment is $2,000 a month. Their wages is not covering it. I just want you to understand on what we're dealing with, with the economy and inflation has gone up that you clearly has recognized. Recognize us. We don't want to leave this city and go to a new one. We love our jobs, but it's making it hard when we can't even make rent every month. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
My name is Bob. I am one of the bus drivers. I work out of the IBMF. Um, and I'm just, I was going to come up here and talk about this, my situation with money. I started with MV just about six years ago. Coming out of training, I made $13 an hour. My rent was $450 a month. Eggs were a dollar a gallon. My soda was 99 cents for two and a half liters. The rent at that same place right now is over $1,000 a month for a 400 square foot studio, $1,000 a month, and it isn't in a good area. Soda's two and a half bucks for two liters. Eggs, I paid $4.89 for 18 two weeks ago. That's over double. Unfortunately, because of inflation, that's over double. Well, I think you guys have done a pretty good job getting our money up, getting our wages up. It, it is still unfortunately, isn't enough because of inflation. Right now, I, my wages haven't doubled. I've lost buying power. I've got to look at what else I can do to make that up. Unfortunately, um, I've got a CDLA. I can go drive a semi. I don't want to take that time away from my family, but I might need to. But I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of where we're all at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sir, oh, sorry. Next speaker?
My name is Terry Richards. I'm the president of ATU Local 1637. The one word I heard over and over again here, as you described how you were going to give this person money and that person money was cost of living. Maybe if you guys, when you put the RFP together, if you automatically put, uh, uh, cost of living into that for these companies so that they can come, because we, we just did negotiations. They tell us what you give them and how much they are allowed to give us. As Francesca said, 4% a year, that's what we settled for so that we can get, we had to take concessions on wages so that we can have the benefits for healthcare that our drivers need. We have, everybody gets cost of living. You just got cost of living. I love MJ. We've been, I've known her for years. I, I really do think she appreciates, she gets, she, she gets what she, I mean, I appreciate what you do for her. She's entitled to get that, whatever money you give her for a raise. But sometimes we needed to, because just as the two people that just stood here said, everything's going up a lot. A regular, if you've got children, I've got people coming to me, they can't afford babysitters. Rent, babysitting, and that's the biggest thing. It, it just, to me, it makes no sense that we go into negotiations and they have, they say they have so little that they can give us in order to give us everything that we need. Maybe if you put a 10% cost of living, uh, thing in your budget so that on top of that, then they negotiate wages with us so that we can come up, so that it does look like we are appreciated financially for what we do for this city. Everybody here today talked about how the, you, well, you kind of threw us in there, the bus drivers, the mechanics. We appreciate you. Show us you appreciate us. Show us that you are okay with us having enough money so that we can send our kids to college. Show us that you appreciate us so that we can have vehicles so that we can get where we need to go. Or forget all of that, that we can even buy food so that we can continue to, as Francesca said, move this city. Just give us that. Thank, oh, I have one other thing for the, just real quick, the lady that got up and talked about the streets and all of that, can you add painting new lines on the street so we can actually see where the traffic is supposed to go? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Um, Mr. Haglund, did you want to go?
Yeah, you know it, man. Hey, Brian Haglund, um, I'm taking nine minutes possibly. Um, bus driver, um, let's see here, I got a lot of shit written down, man. I don't know where to start. Start, um, the fast lane stuff, what did I have for the, um, safety, crosswalks, Boulder Highway, light it up, you know, or give us little forms to fill out. There's lights out on Boulder Highway, all up and down Boulder Highway. I come down Boulder Highway, Fremont Street, they just did it really nice. Someone decided not to do a patch of about 20 yards right in front of the bus stop. You come in, boom! Get to the stop, hey, cool, load the bus up. Um, someone noticed it and said, hey, let's throw some more, um, black stuff down the, um, you know, the tar, whatever you do. So they got little bumps and stuff. So now you go over, and it's like, wow, just lay it down, fix it. When you got to come back, come back, tear it up, man. Because that's all you do. You lay it down and you tear it up. Lay it down, tear it up. All right. Um, crosswalks, I'd like to save, or, um, thank the auto shops on Boulder Highway that have lights in their businesses, because that's the only way I can see a crosswalk on Boulder Highway sometimes, you know? Or else you got some lights going up and then the other side has no lights. It's like, what the hell, man? Are you doing the job? Finish it, man. Come on. Um, wow, them reports really mess me up, man. I got worked up because people, um, in front of me, um, you know, they, they, I get worked up real easy, man. Um, the lady who's sitting here, was she offering jobs, CDL jobs? We've got 1,000 people looking for benefits, pension, you know, decent wages. Give out that information again, because I'm going to be watching this video again, pull it up, get it, pass that information along. Because you got some hungry drivers, really hungry, young drivers in their first few years. They, they want the increase. I talked to my school bus driver today for my daughter. March, they're getting 10% in March. That's tentative. They got to vote on that. They might not, they might want more. 10% in March, next year it's 8%. You know, we got 4% going on, you know? Terry said 10%. Come on, let, let's start at 10, you know? Because I know when I build up, I, I tripled my wage and, well, my time's getting close, man. But, um, yeah, I tripled my wage in my 12 years. Started out at like 9, 10, now I'm up over 30. I'm at top pay. But I, in, in that range, you had 15, I had 15% raises and stuff. Give them people, move them up and top, bring the top up, man. I just got off of welfare this year. I've been on welfare for 11 years. All right, who's speaking now? No, I'm, I'm, I'm going to do some more, guy. Hold on. You're up, my wife. This is Vanessa, my wife. She going to get hurt three minutes, please? Thank you. Um, yeah. We, we need paid, man. We need paid pension. They looking for pension. These drivers, you know, I, I'm setting my 401K, I'm putting as much money as I can into it, you know, I'm maxing out. Because there ain't no pension, you know, I, I've been working since I've been like 12. So I'm getting my social security, hopefully, you know, some of them, oh, you don't vote for him, you taking social security. Come on, man. Money keeps going around in the circle. The plan's there. Pay our dri, pay the drivers more. You'll get the money back somewhere. Bonds, that's great, man. Get them bonds and it's the people that write the reports to get them. Get them, keep writing them and put the good people there and get that money as much you can. It's all funded by the government, man. Let's march Washington and get our money. We want money, man. Super Bowl, all right? We're, we're celebrating Super Bowl in our yard every day, Super Bowl. That's great, man. We're getting donuts, chips, yeah. You know, take as many donuts you want. I start getting them and, oh, three, oh, you're cutting me off? Okay, I got cut off at three. That was good. But I mean, don't offer me all I want and then cut me off, you know? Um, yeah, but we're celebrating Super Bowl so much, it's, it's one day. One day, that's all Super Bowl is, but we're celebrating a week of it. We, there's a month. This is February. What month is it?
Black History Month.
Holy crap, let's celebrate that, man. You know, you guys are advertising here. This is nice. This is nice, man. Let's get some of the drivers, put them up, you know, some quotes, whatever. Let's appreciate these people that are actually making this money out here, you know? Let's do it, guys. Um, yeah, that tentative agreement ain't going, guys. We're going to be back there again. You can see the support here. It, it's great to, but it's not going to happen, guys. We got to vote on it and the voting here. All right? Thank you.
Thank you for talking. Next speaker, please.
Cody, Arantos flies. Uh, first thing I want to talk about, traffic lights, one-way streets. Why do we go green, green, red for three minutes? Should be green, green, green. Overnight traffic lights, why do we come to a street with nobody there, sit there for three minutes and then continue on? There's nobody out there, it's 3:00 in the morning. Communication, buses don't show up, people don't get paid enough to show up to work, so buses don't show up. Our passengers sit out there at the bus stops, they don't know when the bus doesn't show up. We get text messages, says service delays. That means what to somebody sitting at a bus stop? Communication, bus stop closures. We did great with the formula, with the, um, Super Bowl closure for the 104, but that doesn't help the person out there in Flamingo who's trying to get to work, who walks up to a sign that's orange, says, hey, this stop's closed, now they can miss their bus, get late to work. That should be known a week ahead of time. We should put that out there and not just the stop ID number, right? Nobody know what that means, just people in the background. Something that people know, like the street or something like that. And again, I mean, if you don't pay people well, the buses don't show up. I mean, you, the running joke is you could show up to dispatch 30 minutes late sometimes and they'd be like, oh yeah, it's fine, here, go. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir.[1792.41] Next speaker.
Hi, um, my name is Carolyn Higgins, I am a bus driver. And today I'm not feeling good at all, I've been out for about four days. I don't know, it may have been a bug or something on the bus. And I wanted to make sure, let you guys know, that not only are we crippled, or can get crippled, with the schedule, we can be crippled with our buses. There are all kinds of viruses running around and if someone, or if you guys can ensure that they disinfect these buses? Okay, um, I, I'm here, but I'm still kind of, kind of sick. That's the one thing that I had to say. Number two, we have not voted for the contract at all. A lot of us are very hurt about what we received, um, or what was told to us. Four, four percent, our benefits are lousy. Um, what else? We did get two holidays, but we will be voting on the contract. Four percent will not accommodate our livelihoods, our families. What we gonna do? Um, we're gonna vote. And, um, we're gonna vote what we need to do to, um, get someone to pay us. Now, we've looked at, and I've known about some of the trans dev properties that are making $45 an hour. They are making quite a bit. Um, we're in Vegas. Vegas is a metropolitan city. Mostly everybody who's coming to drive the buses are from California. They're amazed about the work that they have to do and the amount of money that's being paid now. Las Vegas need to step up because we are no longer small. We're getting all of these sports, NFLs, and all this activity is happening in this city. And we're the ones that's transporting the people to the activities and we don't have a problem with that. But we do have a problem when we are being looked at as though we're the lowest man on a totem pole around here. Walgreen, Walmart will pay more. A lot of companies will pay more. So that's all we need to do is to, as Terry said, in those, in the RFP, look at us. Instead of telling a new contractor what you want, look at us and see what we do for your ci- your city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, I'm Sandra Adams, Vice President, ATU 1637. Uh, currently, we are in our bidding process. We have spent the last 11 days on the bidding process and we get to the last day and there's an error that the company made. So now we gotta go through this whole bidding process all over again for another 11 days, okay? This is unacceptable, okay? At the Simmons Yard alone, the RTC took 40 packets from our yard. And those 40 packets that were taken from our yard hurt drivers that have been there 15, 20, and 30 years. They have nothing decent to drive. Everything was taken, was just about from our mornings, so I, I mean, drivers with 30 years have nothing decent to drive. We need some of that brought back over there. It's not, it's unfair, okay? Secondly, in our negotiations there, uh, we have this AI system, Lennox system. It's a camera that's watching us 24 hours a day, no matter, if I do this, it's sending a signal to them saying I might be on a cell phone. Yesterday, I sat in the safety meeting, our SDM Jorge stood up and talked about every incident that happened through those cameras with drivers that were called in and all of that stuff, which is unacceptable, that's invading my privacy. Okay, if I scratch my head, it's gonna send signals to them that I'm doing something illegal, I might want to scratch my butt. That's invading my privacy. And it's sending drivers out stressed out, they're scared to do anything, because they don't know if they hit the brake the wrong way if they're gonna get called in, or we got lights that change, you can get two cars to go through, the light will change before the third car goes through and they're not gonna get you for running the light and all kinds of discipline. It's like, everything that's coming out is something to hurt us, something for us to get disciplined over. And it's not fair. And what we do, for what we do and what they're offering us, is a slap in the face, okay? We're worth more than that, I'm worth more than that, they're worth more than that. These are our members that work hard for this city and we should be appreciated. We should be shown that we're appreciated. Like you said, a cupcake or a bagel, a cup of coffee, that's nothing. If I make enough money, I can buy all that stuff, I got all that stuff at home. Okay, so we need to be showing that we are appreciated. Someone needs to step up and look out for our drivers. We want to live in nice homes, nice, drive nice cars like everybody else. But what we do and what we get paid for is just not enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Stephen, uh, I'm a bus driver out here. I've ridden the bus for about 15-
Can you state your last name, if I was?
Stephen King.
Thank you.
I've ridden the bus for about 15 years on and off out here. I chose to become a driver to help make the bus system better because I was constantly late for my jobs, this and that. A lot of us drivers are completely unsatisfied with this new company that's taken over. If you ask me, it's gotten nothing but worse. There's been an increase of, uh, driver assaults, there's been an increase of accidents. And, yeah, fatalities, I mean, it's just gotten worse. Uh, a lot of times they give us a paddle, it's already started, and they rush us out the yard, telling us not to do our pre-trip. That's unsafe, you know? And illegal, you know, it's, it's just not right. We're also, you know, all this, this contract, yeah, we plan on voting no on it. It's not, not right. We're overworked, underpaid, and underappreciated. But yet, you guys want to sit up here and say, thank you, thank you, thanks to our drivers. Well, thank us with our pay. That's how we live, that's how we support our lives, okay? I work five, six days a week, 65 hours I average every week. That's time I'm taking away from my daughter, from my family, everything. So I can provide with the lifestyle we've done and I don't get to do anything. I pay my bills, I pay my rent, pay my car payment, my insurance, I'm lucky if I can buy food. It's ridiculous. And I hear all you guys up here about, you know, everyone needs more pay. You guys are getting hundreds of thousands a year to do whatever you do. I, you know, I'm not saying you're not deserving of it, but we're deserving of our pay too. Every other, most states and other around the country, bus drivers are paid on average $25 to $27 to start with three to five years at top pay. We're at $20, $21 to start with nine to 10 years to top pay. That is ridiculous. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment?
Hello, good morning, good morning, everyone, Mayor. Good morning, my name is Tracy Pruitt, P-R-U-I-T-T. I am new in Vegas, I've been here five years, I still feel kind of new. Um, getting adjusted and acclimated to the city, uh, not knowing yet if it's still home permanently. I have been making statements lately in my job, I started with Keolis and moved out to the Simmons Yard. And I went back and watched a lot of the RTC meetings online. My heart went out to my coworkers, that's who I'm here for today. I wanted to walk in a room at the same time, am I too loud? I wanted to walk in the room at the same time and, and sit back and observe, I cannot do that. I'm emotional at home, watching my coworkers come here and ask, sometimes feel like they're begging, they're begging. And I put myself second as if I would do if, when my mother's mother passed away. It's my grandmother. I had to put myself second to my mother and my aunts and uncles, that's their mother. So I had to take a backseat to my emotions to support love and be there for them. I am doing the same for all of y'all. Y'all have been here for years, going through this. I'm not up here for me today. You all have been here and I've watched you and I support you, anything you need me to do, when I have that time, I support you. I support you. My heart is going out for them, okay? Um, even, and I'm gonna transition really quick, the safety issues. If I was to not become a driver and stayed with, um, public transit, I'd probably be in safety. Whatever happened on Boulder Highway and Greenway, no, not Greenway. Horizon and Racetrack, I was the driver that picked up those passengers that got off that gentleman's bus. They flooded my coach saying, the driver said it could be a bomb on the bus. He's sitting behind the wheel, the police are on, that driver is the same driver who was not showing up, and I have to say it, Brian. Brian stood up here asking to go home while he waited for relief, I'm the bus behind his relief. This is that same driver, where is he? Because why are you telling passengers that there could be a bomb on the bus? And whatever ha- I have not found out all the details, it may not be my business, but I asked that driver, or you ought to, hold him accountable for his statements. I don't know how it could be acceptable if, if they're telling me that he said that. And the concern is great, especially during this weekend, okay? Especially during, every day, it's a great concern. But please, let's find out why he said that. I support you all, I love you, and, and good luck to us all. Thank you, everybody.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? If we could have anyone else who wishes to provide public comment line up, so we get a sense for how many more people. Thank you, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Uh, I'm Susan Swett, I'm the Chief, Chief Operating Officer at TransDev. And this is my team. And, um, I am glad that they come out to express their concerns. And I want to say they are our employees and we did negotiate with them in good faith and... I hear you guys, hang on, let me, let me finish, let me finish.
Okay, let's, let's be respectful, okay?
Yeah, so, I hear what they're saying, we did negotiate in good faith and I can say that the negotiation team from the ATU were unanimous in their support. So, uh, we look forward to continuing to improve our relationships and, um, the, the things that our teams find important to them. I think Brian brought up a great, a point when he was up here about Black History Month. We are celebrating Super Bowl because it's so big for the city. Vegas is on the national events now. We are celebrating that with our employees. And, you know, Brian said, Black History Month, we have some things posted, I was there yesterday, but we need to do more. So I appreciate that kind of feedback and, you know, bring that to us at the yard and we'll be glad to talk with them about it. So, thank you for your time and, um, I look forward to continuing to improve and to, um, settle this, um, contract, get the CBA ratified, I hope, so.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, um, I don't drive, I've been a passenger on and off of-
Please state your name for the record, please.
Oh, sure, Tanya Graham.
Thank you.
I don't drive, as I said, I've been a passenger for some time. I've been contemplating being a driver, but sitting up in here and listening to all this rigmarole and y'all going back and forth about nonsense when these people really do run your city. I have a cousin and a few other family members that have ran these buses for years. Um, my cousin's father and now my cousin, Tanya Benson, drives these buses, it's hard for her. She's a single mom at this moment. She got three girls, teenagers. I've been doing this bus routes back and forth through this whole city since my 18-year-old daughter was two years old. I've been back and forth from California, y'all suck. I have a friend out there, she started years ago on her route at $18 an hour. That was years ago. I heard $13 an hour over here to start a few years back, that man stated that. That's ridiculous. Y'all are a big city. Y'all earn too much out here with these casinos and everything else to not give these people their money. Give them what they deserve. And they can do better, let me reframe, give them what they deserve so that they can do what they need to do for everybody else, which is run this mug, because that's what they've been doing. Y'all sitting over here in these little paper pushing pencils, they out here with these folks and everybody ain't nice. Like, for real, everybody's not nice, how many deaths have y'all had on the bus? How many drivers have to protect theyself? My cousin is sitting at another desk, not driving the bus, because of another driver outside, another outside driver. They hit her bus. She can't work the way she want to. She gotta sit, but y'all still not paying her right either. Y'all needs to do y'all job, because really, I don't think you deserve what you got. I don't know you like that to say it, but they hungry. So I don't think so. I'm sure you're not pushing paperwork for the welfare office, trying to figure it out. Your kid's not questioning how they gonna get to school. You're not late. You're not late, you're not on this bus. Come on, y'all gotta do better for these folks. That's, this is sad, I, I just needed to find out if I could talk, because I don't drive. I want to, but the way they have to hustle for their money, man, no. Y'all ain't right, fix it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hey, do I make it real quick? This is my daughter, Kalen. She wanted to say some things, but she's kind of shy, so, um, I'll speak for her, you want to say something?
He's making me come up here.
I, I just needed a little time, I, I just listened to it and, um, alright, the $2.50 bonus they give you, just to show up to work, they're giving you $2.50, alright? Show up, work your shift, get $2.50. That's, um, comes out of six and a quarter an hour. Just put that six and a quarter on my check and I'll show up every day. I won't call off, I'll have money to be able to do things, you know? Six and a quarter, you're doing it once a month, sometimes two, three months. Last company was doing 500 for a month, that was ridiculous. That's 12, 12.50 an hour added to your check, just to show up, sign up, hey, here. We, we can make some money, man, it's not, I love overtime work, nearly 50 bucks an hour, but it's taking time from my family, that's what sucks. And, um, everyone that comes up here is hyped and we're excited, we're, we're really confused and what, what's going on, you know? You got two different CBAs, people not asking questions, how do you do this? How do I do that? It's, let's get it together, settle it, man. Um, the people, the, the agreement team, they were happy for the agreement, the lady said, um, that must have been the three people that voted yes, you know? I, I don't know, man, but, um, yeah, composure, you gotta keep, we, we have to come to work happy so we're able to transport these people and deal with the little crisis. It sucks they have to deal with it on the side and then, yeah, you walk in the door, you might have to deal with some, but we, we have this on our mind, we're driving every day thinking like, God, this, I mean, the money, you got some money, you're able to do things and you gotta work for your family to enjoy your life, but, um, we gotta keep our composure to deal with these people or else we might get a last and final, you know? Hey, this is your last and final, you did something, I made a mistake, I was really agitated. Now you're adding more agitation on the agitation I already got by telling me, hey, this is the last time. You do it again, you have no job and you're like, what? Come on, come on, we, we all have attitudes and people have situations going on, just like the passengers we deal with and stuff, alright? We're all dealing with these crazy people, whatever, everyone has their own mindset, but, um, don't, don't just fire people and take away their livelihood and stuff, just don't do that. Give them chances and try to figure out the individual, hey, man, Brian's a little special, he might get hyped up, man, he talks loud or something, might scare you, might seem intimidating, but... He talks loud or something, might scare you, might seem intimidating, but if you know me, you understand me. There's drivers that might need a little more training on how to talk to people and how to communicate, but don't give them the last and final, man, because once you do that-
Thank you, Ms. Ragland.
-I'm like, screw it, man, I'm gonna drive this bus-
Thank you, Ms. Ragland.
-you know, get crazy, hey?
All right, next speaker.
Don't do it to them.
I'm sorry, I just got one more thing to say.
If you've already spoken, then, then your time's up.
I wanna challenge each one of you to come and ride the bus with us, so you can see if we deserve more than 4%. Braves. Don't, don't, don't take the good bus. Don't take the 121, 21. Don't take the real good routes. We want you to come and ride the 113. In the middle of the day, and Boulder Highway, in the middle of the day, come on and ride with us, so you will see that we deserve more than 4%. 4% for me is 92 cents. 4% for our top drivers is a dollar and 24 cents.
Over four years?
Over four years. So please, come ride the bus with us. Don't do it in, in, in the timeframes that y'all go early in the morning. Come in the middle of the day. When you're in a shift, in the middle of the day, rush hour, kids getting out of school, the kids all over the place. Yes, I love the kids. I got nine grandkids. But they know not to get on the bus and act a fool with our, with the drivers, because if I find out, they gonna be in trouble. We got kids that get on our bus, they disrespect us. Yes, we can't discipline nobody else's kids. But now that RTC has contracted with CCSD to help these kids get to school every day, they should get on our bus and be respectful. They should get on our bus. Okay, they don't have a fare. We were told, let the kids ride. I have no problems with that. I love the kids. But get on our buses. Come and ride with us, so y'all can see that we deserve way more than 4%.
Thank you very much. Anyone who hasn't spoken already who wants to speak? Mr. Nimrod. You'll be our last speaker, unless someone else wants to get up and get in line. Thank you.
Some great talk up here, I'm, I'm telling you. Okay, good, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Justin Jones. My name is Eric Melchizedek Christ Nimrod. You can find Nimrod in Genesis, the 10th chapter, the 6th to the 10th verse. I think first class, like our lovely, sweet, courageous, smart mayor Carolyn and her loving husband, Oscar, they transformed Las Vegas from prehistoric to historic, that right now, the whole world has their eyes on Las Vegas and the Super Bowl LVIII. An event that I read will bring 500 to 600 million and more sweet dollars to Las Vegas. I envision the buses being like long Rolls-Royce limousines inside, like these posters. And on the inside, where when visitors take the bus and go home, they talk about, you know what? Those buses have some great signs inside them with good messages. The RTC should capture some of that millions of sweet dollars that are now coming into the city, that the good men's have, the good men's have built. They built this beautiful city from cactus to a flowering tree. The RTC is part of an intelligent nationwide transportation system, and the Ubers, Lifts, limousine services must now compete with the RTC buses. Eventually, the Hollywood Oscar Awards will be held here, just like Formula One and other extravaganzas. The RTC can do it by continually putting, we the people of Las Vegas, first, who ride the bus, the rich and the not-so-rich. Equity is what that is called. The poor are richly rich in the poverty lie that sweet money is evil, taught from 1 Timothy to 6, chapter to 10th verse. That is a lie. Money is not evil. Most people think that. They got that consciousness messed up. See, so they stay poor, they think it's holy to be poor. It is not holy to be poor. Christ was not poor. So what I'm saying is that we must uplift the consciousness of the people in the bus, and those who drive the bus, and those who will take the bus and go home and say, wow, that bus was a good thing. Don't take the limousines. Ride the bus.
Thank you, Mr. Nimrod. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Andrea Henry, and I'm a driver for TransDev. The truth of the matter is, when I leave out of my door in the morning, in the afternoon, I don't know if I'm gonna come back home at night, because it is dangerous out there. It's very dangerous. 4% is not acceptable. By the time I pay my bills, my rent, my, my insurance, I barely have money to, to go grocery shopping. This is not acceptable at all. And another thing that I would like to bring to you guys' attention, I do the 206 Charleston. I cannot believe that there's no streetlights for blocks going west after you pass over Fremont. It's totally dark out there, you guys. Are you kidding me? Somebody, I mean, a child has gotten killed out there. What are you guys doing? Where are the lights at? Where's, where's our money at? We need to get paid. I don't know about every, I mean, we're mad about, I'm mad about it. I need to get paid for, I deserve to get paid more than what I'm getting paid. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Carmen Lita Regis. I'm a transdev operator. I've been driving the strip for 26 years now, unfortunately. You know, with all the insults and abuse that we're getting on a daily basis, I believe the drivers ought to deserve better. As we all know, our city is in the spotlight this week. You know, Vegas Golden Night, Tuesday night, beat Edmonton to end their 17-game winning streak, and that's great. And the biggest event is this Sunday, and it's not the Super Bowl. It's whether Taylor Swift's gonna make it on time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Janet Rodriguez. I am an operator, and I do drive the strip. Hi, MJ. My concerns are the morale at our jobs. It has gone down. We don't wanna be there anymore, but we go because we have to pay our bills. 4% sad. You're a great person, MJ, for your 7.5%. That's great. But we need our percentage as well. Yo soy latina. Y yo pienso que nosotros necesitamos más que lo han dado. Es todo lo que tengo que hacer, decir gracias.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the second public comment period, and we are adjourned. Thank you.